Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
About the Rita collections, John and the mayor, you both mentioned a large sum, a million or $2 million that we already have judgments in on, right? They've already gone to court. There's a judgment, they're just not collected. What would we look at, what we need to do to actually see collection of those things?
I think, did we hire a firm at one point to help us, a collection firm at one point?
Was a legal firm that?
Keith Weiner and Associates. And then, I don't know, I haven't heard from them either in quite some time, but I assume they're out there trying, you know, they're doing it. I do see occasionally, you know, bankruptcies are coming and Rita's addresses on them, so they're getting notified of bankruptcies. And Weiner, I see some things, you know, I see them in court physically collecting, they're on the same day that I'm there every Thursday and Friday, and they're there on small claims cases or, you know, trying to collect the money or doing debtors exams, asking people how, you know, that's a way to, you know, once you have a judgment, you could drag them to court to ask them, you know, how are you going to pay this? And we're reaching agreements with people, they do try to reach agreements with people rather than, you know, take money that they really can't afford. But Gary Vargo was here and he was, you know, doing that for quite some time, but that, you know, we couldn't afford to keep him there.
Oh, he retired.
Oh, he retired, or whatever it was.
That was a personal, very personal, that's how, I think that's how you're going to get them is, you know, a one-on-one, basically.
So what do you foresee being successful in the collection of these?
It's just, you know, I just don't think people have the money to pay them, to be honest. It's just like a criminal case, they, you know, they're not going to pay until they're forced to be, they're either arrested or...
Or you garnish their wages.
Or garnish their wages if you're lucky enough to find them. It's the same with the mayor's court thing upstairs, it's like, we keep a close eye on that too. Sometimes when we arrest somebody for a fine that they owe upstairs, you know, I believe they should be punished, but I'm not going to let them sit there for, you know, a week where we have to pay the expensive housing, which isn't that much, but still $15, $20 a day, you know, adds up. So I usually try to get them out of here, you know, before the weekend. I mean, I watch it every day to see if there's somebody in there that just basically owes money on some minor ticket, so, you know, kind of keep an eye there. But I don't know what the answer is. But you're right, we could get more aggressive, so hire some more, but everybody's in the same boat, really. I don't know what the answer is, but we could get more aggressive. Perhaps, you know, if we had more attorneys in the office, maybe we could, but I don't do it ourselves, but...
More attorneys.
Well, or if we hired a collection manager, you know, somebody that could...
Weiner and Associates, is that right?
That was the law.
He's Weiner.
Oh, okay. He was trying to do the collections?
He was at some point. Again, that's more of a finance thing than...
And he wasn't successful?
Somewhat successful.
And even when they are, they get a percentage of what they collect.
They do.
So it's not dollar for dollar.
But something's better than nothing, but what, that's the only suggestion I've heard thus far, was that prospect collection agencies or anything else?
If they bring in another Gary that would also be able to help out Irene or whoever is in the financial department?
Account manager, some sort, somebody...
How much, did he bring in his keep?
Yes, I did.
And that's something...
You have to bring in way more than make it cost effective. I mean, look, the best thing to do in any of these things is you've got to farm it out to somebody, even if you split 50/50, because you're not paying anybody anything then, because any money you get then is free money. It's money that you're owing, you're not going to get what you get, but if you have to pay somebody, now you've got an alligator that's eating you, because you have to pay them, you have to pay them benefits. If you farm it out to an agency, there's plenty of them out there, every day they'll go out there and they'll call and they will be aggressive and they will do whatever they need to do to get it, and those are the people you give it to. If you only get 40% of your collection rate, you has 40% of money that you're getting that you weren't going to get otherwise, and it didn't cost you a dime, that's what you have to do.
What are your thoughts, Jim?
Well, and also, other this new tax code, there's an issue of whether we can charge attorneys' fees and collection costs in the future. This is, you know, down the line, it's not till 2017 when we start collecting for 2016, but, so that's whether we're permitted or not to do that, which could change the whole game. If you're not going to be able to, you know, tack attorneys' fees on and court costs, then they're not going to get too many attorneys that are going to want to do it, you know, but...
So the state is supporting this?
They're mandating that we...
Why?
Because they changed their...
Home rules, just down the tubes, I mean, it's just...
Okay.
So that's something that we're going to be considering in a month?
You'll have it at the next council meeting.
And that includes what you just mentioned, not being able to tack on fees?
Well, we're still researching, and we're still feeling out to other communities, because other communities are obviously in the same boat. We want to, we want to put it in there, but the model that they provided us doesn't have it in there, and there's some, no one's going to seem to give us a straight answer of whether or not you're allowed to do it, because it's not in there, so everybody's just scared of the big old state, you know, so my thought is to put it in there and let somebody challenge it, you know, and then if they do, you know, so be it, you know, negotiate then. If not, might as well put it in there. Most people...
And then, John, if they, if they made a new state rule or whatever, is that not someplace in the administrative code or something that we could look up to find out the answers?
Well, we are, there isn't, there, it's not, they didn't, they have a collection paragraph, but it doesn't require fees and costs on post-judgment or pre-judgment. It's kind of complicated, I'll explain it to you another time, I could sit here all night and talk about this one, but, and I don't have a clear answer yet, but I am looking into it.
Okay. Any, any other, I liked your idea, I think that was Chief, Chief John?
What did I do with that?
Pull together some of the things that you've already done, and I think that would be great if each of the departments would do that, because it would make it much easier.
That was Chief Weiner's idea about...
Oh, was it?
He was the one that wrecked them all, right? He's the one that wrecked them all, that did the records put together.
That was Chief Weiner. Well, I, you know, one chief is just like, you know, like...
Oh. Jackie?
Sorry. Yes, go ahead.
HR. How many men, how many personnel we have, Mayor? Well, no, no, not in HR, oh, in the city, that she represents. How many employees?
All the full-time and all the part-time, I mean, all of them.
Approximately.
You know, I can't even say a couple hundred. I don't know, that might be a little high. Maybe 150, you know?
There's 20 you have police, plus, plus three civilian, and seven, so you have like 35 there.
My department.
So...
29 of those, plus me, that's a very...
The service is what, six or seven?
No.
13 people here?
Yeah, and you have, you're counting all your auxiliaries too?
It'd be more than 100.
I counted the jailers, I didn't count the auxiliaries.
Auxiliaries.
Auxiliaries, about another 20.
Yeah.
Heck, it almost not even 100.
No, it's over that.
It's not 250.
No, well, at one time, that's what we had, yeah. Seniors, just...
That would be interesting to combine, as we've been talking about a PR, not a PR person, but a economic development, or somebody who goes out and actually knocks on doors and looks for businesses and promotes us as much as we can, to combine HR and a economic development person.
You want to combine human resources and economic development?
Or then, or a...
Economic development and housing, but not economic development and HR. There's just no way that would be compatible.
So housing person would be, you're looking at a hire, right?
Looking at hiring somebody increasing the payroll.
Well...
Definitely, it'd be...
Yeah.
So can I, Matt, it's going to change the...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Do you remember at one point in time, we were talking about renaming the senior center?
Yep.
Do you think that that's something that we should do just in case we may have to go on ballot in the spring?
It was something everybody just wanted to be thinking about, come back with ideas.
What do you mean, rename, like naming rights? Like Progressive Field and the Q, is that what you're going to move on?
No, but I think, I think, and I'm not calling it a stigma, but for it being only Maple Heights Senior Center, there's so many other things that that building does...
Oh, I see.
Other than just serve as seniors, so it, you can't call it a community center, because we don't do basketball, but it's almost like human resources or human services, but that sounds like weird too, so just to rename it as a, some type of a center that people go to for all of their needs. I mean, you know, you're talking about food, you're talking about shelter, you're talking about utilities, medicine, sickness, resource, resource center?
And how does that affect your internal grants and stuff, or if you're going to affect that?
Doesn't, we apply, we apply under the Maple Heights Department of Human Services, Department of Human Services Senior Division. We don't, the Maple Heights Senior Center is the name of the building, it doesn't reflect much else, it's just been the name of the building. They needed that when they originally applied to renovate it, but that's long gone. That was House Bill 1080, 1081, I think, when they got the money originally to remodel it from a library to a senior center. And then it had, everything had to stay intact for 10 years after that happened with the state of Ohio. And once the 10 years had expired, that was that. It's a good idea to think on it, I don't think we're ready for that, but it's...
What was your point behind that? It sounded like you were going somewhere with your opinion.
The point is just to let people know that there is a place in the city for other people to go other than seniors for services that they need, because, you know, when you're talking to a family that needs to have this or this or that, "Oh, go to the senior center, I can't go there, I'm not old." I mean, let us hear that. And it's, it's not just for people that are old, because you provide a lot of different services. I mean, the seniors might be a good subset of that, but, you know, with more demand for services, there also could be more need or a demand for grants that can come in for different things that we could offer people.
Senior center and community services, something like that.
Did this relate to like the finances in some, some fashion?
Um, yeah, because I'm thinking that if by chance the levy doesn't pass, and if we want to try again by December 9th, in order to put something up in the spring, with the renaming of the building and trying to possibly also maybe increase the mileage to bring us back to what we were before, when we had a rec department and we were able to take care of the parks and we were able to offer, you know, soccer and everything else for the kids, people will see the multi-use of the center rather than just it being poured in on seniors, because we're all guilty of calling it the senior center. I mean, that's the only thing that we know to call it, but there's so many other things. And I'm not trying to be negative, I mean, we're not going to pass, but I think that there's, there's a need out there that other people are talking about, and we need to bring a lot of that stuff back. And maybe people will vote for something if it encompasses more than just seniors.
Reality is though, that if this does not pass, it's still not in the budget for next year at this point, so, no.
We got these angels...
I know, I know, right. I don't know if we can go back again and again and again.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
On the topic of the senior center, I think it would be good to be considering what our Plan B will be in the case that the tax levy does not pass, how we will exit from the senior center if it comes down to that, what our timetable will look like, how things will, will go down, because I would, I would hate not to be prepared for that.
Like, is it something for the mayor to have to figure out, right?
What would it be kind of like by that point?
We don't have to be discussing now, we don't want to be negative about it, let's stay positive.
Well, I want to be realistic.
What happened last year is what happened. We were not in the budget for this year, but we were able to get to March 31st because of grant money. So that would be realistically where you'd be now. Our grants, all of the grants have been approved for next year, so if those now, I can't do another year like this next year, so that's, I can't, I mean, I'm, I'm open to doing some fundraising, some senior centers are, you know, you, to stay in the budget, they're responsible for a certain percentage, but I can't do what I did this year, so, but there would be, I'm sure if I talked to Irene, the amount of money coming in from the grants. The other thing is, we're, we're paid for what we do, so we won't get paid in January for, for some December and November will be coming in after the first of the year. That's how we made it to March 31st.
Okay.
So at that point in time, I think there would be enough time, enough transition time in a three-month period to make other adjustments to, there aren't, there's no one knocking on our door to pick up the services, you know, but we, whoever the mayor is would be looking at turning transportation over to the senior transportation connection. You'd have to buy services from them, it would not, but there are places to go.
Yeah.
And three months would be plenty of time to do that.
Yeah, where, what goes where?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if everyone has a final question, idea, suggestion, and then I don't want to go beyond 8 o'clock, so anybody want to speak now? Or, you know, you can just email and continue on. We'll have more, a couple more of these hopefully between now and the time that we have to pull this all together.
What does that mean, Madam Chairman?
Which one?
The next, the one with the state?
Auditors? Oh, the one with the state?
He hasn't said it, has he?
I thought you gave a time on that.
November, is it? November, so either Tuesday or Thursday, and I know you do court on Tuesday, it was either the 14th or the 17th, I believe. I don't have a calendar.
It was the day you had court.
But he hasn't said it officially.
I think I have on both those days, but I mean...
No, he, he pulled those two dates out, and it was Tuesday that he...
Still up in the air.
Correct.
What was that, 8:30, the time you were throwing out?
That's, that's auditors.
Oh, what day was that?
That's auditors with Irene, with Irene.
Oh, what day was that, I'm just curious, I, I, what day is...
October 24th.
That's a single, October 24th.
I go back, I got...
27th.
November 17th, 3:00 PM. She said 4:05.
17, okay, 17, and then the other one was the Thursday, what day is that? Thursday would be 19?
The 19th, but I think they settled on the 17th, and that's why I'm only down on it.
I think it's, I think either, either one, he said Tuesday or Thursday.
I mean, it was Saturday.
It was Saturday, so...
That's wrong.
Yeah.
I think it's the 27th. Or not, not a Saturday.
No, 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 we're talking November.
No, she said, you said October 24th was the meeting with the auditor.
That's auditors.
That's the 24th, it's a Saturday. They're coming on a Saturday?
No.
No, 27.
27. That's what I had.
Okay.
You know, Jackie, I'm sitting here, listen, the mayor made almost every possible cut he could do.
Yep.
And here we are. I mean, we need the senior center levy passed, we're going to have to come up with an operating revenue levy, there's no way out of it. Residents better get ready, if they ain't going to go for it again, then I don't see how we could possibly do much of anything. They're all crying about this late pickup, and explaining to them about three men don't have the money, don't have the people, and then they say, "Why? We don't have the money, and here it is. The mayor's done everything possible to get us out of this hole, and we ain't, we ain't going nowhere. And there's nowhere to go but to an operating revenue, and residents better get used to it."
John, firing an police lady coming up in another year?
They probably know better than I.
No, it's not another year.
No, no, just past one.
We passed it in 12, and it was actually a year ahead.
13, 14?
It's a five-year levy.
It was a five, yeah.
It's coming up, Tom.
And the grant for the six firemen, that's only for one year, right?
Two years.
Two years.
We got room there.
All we can do is keep doing what we're doing.
Keep doing what we're doing.
Bottom line. I told them to bring bags of money up when they come up from the auditors, and she said she'd...
That's what they ought to do.
They ought to, yeah.
Yeah, they told me they ought to bring it back.
John, did Renault ever give you a copy of the map that has all the land being property in Maple? We need to start also marketing some of our land and try to bring in some business and...
I called her again.
But you have to have somebody do that, you have to have someone appointed.
She's going to Disney World last time, she'll go back.
Okay, last remarks, anybody?
We can't, we can't market that.
Yes, yes?
Yeah.
Nothing?
I just want to thank Alex for his supportive comments.
It's truth.
I appreciate that, I really do. It's a, it's a bigger problem, I think, than just trying to make the cuts that we're trying to do, although they're all good ideas, it doesn't get us where we need to be.
Of course not, because you've already made the big ones, these are, you know...
Nickel dimes.
And we need either to put some kind of a increase on the ballot that's going to be either, well, you only have so many choices, you have income tax, income tax credit, property taxes, or you have the cameras. You have four choices.
And couldn't we sell the cameras? That was the way out. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't be sitting discussing these cuts, we'd be hiring.
Yeah, what's...
Is anybody going to support the cameras? Mr. Girard, want to be mayor?
I don't feel like I need to answer any questions, thank you.
Oh, it took me a little bit of questions, Tom.
But that, that's the bottom line, is we have a big problem, we need a big amount of money to solve it, because you heard the new sheriff in town, when he came up here from, where was he, from Canton, that if we don't make certain goals or whatever, then they'll cut us, what, 15?
Eighty?
15%, 85?
To 85, right, they'll do, I don't know how they can, how can they possibly cut us any more than we're already cut.
I'm going to put a spin if it's okay.
What?
Yeah, one of the things, one of the things whoever's here and whoever's coming in needs to focus on is retention, the retention of the current employees. And I'll tell you why, simply, it's not just a, there's a cost involved, those and keeping 10-year people, 10-year people, but the issue isn't training, okay? You know, from a police department standpoint, it's expensive to train people, and it's expensive to go give civil service tests, and it's expensive to hire. So if you get good people and you can retain them and you can, and you maintain that standard, in the end, it's going to be a cost savings to you. If you're constantly, we, we've lost in the police department 13 people in the last, you know, 14 months. The cost to replace them, you're never going to get the cost in terms of the experience, but every person that's 16 to 18 weeks of training that we're paying somebody for, then we're not getting anything from them then at that point, other than training, okay? We're not, so in other words, they're not providing any service to people all during that time, other than what they're directed to do. Probably imagine it's the same thing for fire. You've got to somehow come up with a way to make this, to make the city attractive to people to stay, you know, and you lose a lot when you go from a, you, you lose quite a bit, when you lose the people in the middle of your department, in other words, your...
Your support?
Well, not just your support, but they're actually more, they're, they are your...
Work forces?
Yeah, not just your work forces, but they're, they're actually like a training ground in and of themselves, and sometimes the training might be good, sometimes it might be bad, but for the most part, they have experience though that a brand-new employee won't have, and they act as a buffer then between your first-line supervisors and your brand-new people. You know, they're, they're people that can provide training, because they go out on the calls with these people, they have the experience, they've dealt with the situations before, and, you know, simply talking from a police standpoint, I mean, those are the people that are going to give you the guidance that your younger officers, the guidance that they're going to need in order to make sure that they handle things properly, because they've done there, they've been there, and it takes a lot of the burden off, so, there's a cost savings of that, you know, and take apart, away the fact that if you don't retain people, you're paying them to leave, and you're paying them exorbitant amounts of money when they go, so...
What do you see as positive incentives to stay when we don't have raises? What other kind of incentives can you offer?
Well, image of the neighbor, you gotta improve the image, all we hear is negative, negative, negative.
There's got to be confidence in the administration and the, and council and just the city in general that, that things are going to turn around. I mean, you know, obviously, you know, there's, one of the issues I know for the younger police officers and fire, and anybody who gets a pension through the system, says that if you don't get a raise, you don't get a, you don't get, you don't get an increase down the road when you do go to retire. Yeah, I've made a suggestion, the union, I'd make it the council and everybody here as a body as well, that, and I don't know what the reception is from the other end, but it would almost be better in terms, rather than reducing, for example, healthcare to play a bit of a shell game, in other words, offer an increase, but then offset it by charging more for something else, so that it's in their paychecks and it's in their life. I don't know how easily that's done, or what the issues would be that way, but if people aren't, a lot of these younger guys are leaving because they're not seeing anything, and they haven't seen anything almost for eight years now, other than if they get promoted, and that's, that's a big issue. The workload is there, but I mean, I think for the most part, you know, they've, they've become accustomed to that, but I mean, you, you need to maintain staffing levels as best you can. I mean, obviously, you know, we've dropped from, we've dropped in staffing from 40, you know, 41 to 33, and just, you know, keep, do what you can do to, to keep it that way to, to encourage people to stick around. Because then that also takes away some of the negativity that may be surrounding things, because you only have people leaving in droves.
Yeah, and you mentioned house care cuts, young guy, starting a family, couple more kids, colleague, "I better get out of here."
Well, yeah, well, actually, they're going to go where it's beneficial to them financially, that's a different, you know, that's a different thing too, so you have to try to make it attractive that way.
I think a lot too is, you know, everything, you know, connects with each other, you know, the workload is way up from where it used to be, you know, with the increased workload and the reduced, reduction in manning, so is the safety factor. Now, the other problem is like with the fire department, we've lost that middle tier of employees. We have people that are in the drop program, people that are nearing the end of their career, and right now, that is the backbone of the Maple Heights Police and Fire Department. You have these new conduits that are coming on, somebody, you know, the Solons, the Beachwoods, the Westleys come up, they wave a fish and they jump on it. So the only reason that your, your top tier is not leaving is honestly, I think, because they can't. They're too old to take civil service tests, they're too, too old in their career to start somewhere else new. What happens is these people start leaving if we can't keep retaining new people. I mean, you know, it gets frustrating, how sooner do you process someone or hire someone? I mean, we had to, okay, we just hired, we lasted two weeks in Bedford tonight, you know what I mean? How are you going to establish that experience and that, that level of service that we've been accustomed here? You know, that's, just being a chief looking towards the future, I mean, that's a terrible concern. I mean, what are you going to do? You have a group of guys right now that are here because they're here. For a sense of better word, they're stuck here, they can't leave. What happens is they start retiring and start leaving. What are we going to do?
And you know, that's part of the whole issue with even the residents, they're stuck. That's what I hear from a lot of people, "I'm stuck, I can't leave, I can't, I can't do anything, I'm stuck here." And that's, somehow we have to turn that around.
Right. Focus needs to be on, not making it seem like you're being stuck here because you're...
I want to be here, right, it's my city, I want...
Actually, just...
Yeah, but we can't talk benefit cuts to the police, to the fire, to anybody, because if you can't, if you don't have the benefits and you start cutting, they're going to leave. That's the number one thing, and that's what I always worked for, is my benefits, and I'm getting them cut, but it's the selling point, and you're going to hear more about these pension cuts coming up, I would, yours.
They're really, they're not pitching, yeah.
Yeah. You get on the website, you're going to see, we just started ours, and they're pushing it through, so these men are all looking at that, so you've got to make sure that you tell them your benefits are, are solid. You're not going to go year after year and raise the rates on them, and they're going to be looking, they're looking, where do I get the best benefits that don't cost me no money? That's all, that's what they're doing. They can make them, make the, make it on their wages, because they got that figured in, but them benefits, they just keep going up, but we got to keep paying them because we've got to retain our people. Once you think you can start cutting them, they're going to go, because Westlake, Abel and them, they can afford it. We're squeezed, but we have to afford it. And the residents, you can't keep having to count and get in eight percent cut here on your property taxes, just like all of us, my, me, house went from all the way down to eighty-one and seven.